Got it. Yep, I'll do it again, yeah. Good afternoon. This is a review session of the New York City Planning Commission. Today is Monday, February 11th, 2019, and the time is 1:02 PM. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map amendment in Queens, Community District 6. Our presenter is Nolan Gray.
Madam Chair, Mr. Stevens, ma'am.
Yes. Okay. Good afternoon. This is a private application from Abel Orthopedic and Sports Medicine requesting a zoning map amendment from R2 to R32 to facilitate the expansion of two legally non-conforming medical offices. The proposed project area is situated in Forest Hills in Community District 6 in Queens. More specifically, it's in an area known locally as Q Forest, a combination of Forest Hills and Q Gardens. It's situated between Queens Boulevard, the Long Island Railroad Main Line, and the Jackie Robinson Expressway. The project area is currently in an R2 zone mapped in 2000 as part of the Q Forest, DCP-sponsored Q Forest rezoning. This was a downzoning designed to preserve the neighborhood's existing single-family character and restrict future multifamily development. In 2004, the community facilities text amendment restricted medical offices in R1 and R2 zones, at which point the existing medical offices in the sites in question became legally non-conforming. The project area of Budson R6 is owned to the southwest and north, which is characterized by multifamily walk-ups. Queens Boulevard, one block to the north, is currently zoned C42. The proposed development site in the rezoning area are roughly approximate but not identical. The rezoning area extends 55 feet into the block from Austin Street to remain parallel with the existing R6 across the street from 76th Drive. The proposed development site includes the two formerly single-family homes. We'll talk more about what's in them in a minute. I would note, though, that a small portion of the neighboring property, 11108-76th Drive, is included in the rezoning. So currently, there are two structures in the proposed development area. On the left, you can see 11104-76th Drive. This is along 76th Drive and Austin Street. Currently, there's 1,600 square foot of medical office space that's on the first floor, and there's a 932 square foot residential space, or one dwelling unit. To the right, 11103-77th Avenue. This is at the intersection of 77th Avenue and Austin Street. There's currently 1,600 square feet of medical office space, which is in the basement, and 2,800 square feet of residential on the first and second floors. This makes up one dwelling unit. The applicant proposes to expand the existing medical offices to the entirety of the respective buildings, which would create a 2,500-square-foot medical office space and a 4,300-square-foot office space. The applicant does not propose to change the built form of either structure, and the proposed zoning would not facilitate that. Currently, there are approximately 16 parking spaces, as well as a shared parking lot between the two buildings. So the current site photos in image one, you can see this is 11103-77th Avenue. From 77th Avenue, currently, it maintains the built form of the area, a single-family home. Turning around and looking from Austin Street, images two and three, you can see where the basement currently operates as a medical office space, including the awning. And if you look at image three, you can also see the parking lot, which is shared between the two structures. This is 11104-76th Drive. Again, image one is facing from 76th Drive, maintains the single-family character. Images two and three, you can see the medical office space from the back, the entrance from the back along Austin Street. Few images here for a little more context. The top left is 11108-76th Drive, a depth of five feet of which will be rezoned, so this would not facilitate any new development. Image two and three show the shared border with the R6 zone. You can see a significant change in density, multifamily abutting along Austin Street and 76th Drive. Some more details on the requested map amendment. This is an R2 to an R32 rezoning. So the key differences here is that R32 would permit multifamily, although it's not proposed as part of this application. But more importantly, it would permit medical offices, which became non-conforming as of 2004. An important thing to note is that the residential FAR and the community facility FAR do not change, so we don't anticipate future built areas as part of the proposal. If you have any questions, thank you.
Questions from the Commission. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Is the adjacent homeowner that's impacted partially by the rezoning, have they been notified of this?
I'm not sure. I can double-check. Yeah.
Other questions? Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. You know, as I look at this, I see you said there's 16 spaces, and there's a very large curb cut for what is a small lot. And, you know, given the desire for walkability, particularly on Austin Street, I'm concerned about that. And, you know, the entrance is 7655. I'm not sure if that's a curb cut or a spot or a lot. If you go back, actually, one of the previous images, yeah, you can see it on the left. I'm not sure if that function sometimes as a parking space, or if that's just a handicap ramp, but it would seem that their parking should be rationalized to some extent, and that, you know, that the sidewalk is treated as a sidewalk, as opposed to a very large entrance to a very small lot.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, part of the motivation for the application was the, in 2009, they received a stop-work order from DOB for some of this related sidewalk work. As part of any future work, they would have to come into conformance with screening requirements, and the curb cuts that exist on the site would be double-checked by DOB.
Okay. It would be nice to see the plans that address that issue, and also what can be done to improve the walkability and, you know, the distinction between the lot itself and the sidewalk. Really, there's nothing there to indicate. There's, you know, anything but a parking lot there. It's not a walkable environment, per se.
Mm-hmm. If you'd like, I could send you the site plans that they've sent us, and we'll talk to them about that again.
Yeah, I mean, it's specifically what their plans are to improve, you know, the conditions of the sidewalk, the curb cut, and plantings that might create a barrier between the lot, the parking and the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
The second item on the agenda, page 29, is a certification of a zoning map amendment in Queens, Community District 1. Our presenter is Blake Montieth.
Good afternoon, Chair Lago, Commissioners. This is a private application to facilitate the legalization of an existing commercial building in Astoria, Community District 1, Queens. The owner of the development site at 3801 23rd Avenue is applying to map a new commercial overlay over existing R5B and R5D districts. This rezoning would allow the applicant to pursue physical culture establishment special permits from the Board of Standards and Appeals to legalize a yoga studio and a CrossFit gym in the building. The rezoning area is located at the intersection of Steinway Street and 23rd Avenue in Astoria, northeast of the Grand Central Parkway, and southwest of Did Mars Boulevard. It's about a 10-minute walk to Did Mars Boulevard and N.W. subway station. 23rd Avenue and Steinway Street are both considered wide streets, as defined by the zoning resolution. Steinway Street is an established commercial corridor with predominantly mixed residential and commercial buildings. The city applied new commercial overlays to Steinway Street through the 2010 Astoria rezoning, but did not address zoning needs of a number of existing commercial buildings within the rezoning area that were built before the enactment of the 1961 zoning resolution, and this includes the applicant's property highlighted here in red. The rezoning area includes the full 23rd Avenue block front of Block 805 between 38th Street and Steinway Street. The applicant's building, shown here, is a four-story loft commercial building built in 1911. This was formerly used as the Astoria Silk Works factory. The building currently houses at least 20 commercial tenants, including a CrossFit gym on the first floor and a yoga studio on the second floor. Again, both of those uses would require a physical culture establishment special permit from the Board of Standards and Appeals. In addition to those uses, there are media and art studios, offices, catering and event space, a warehouse space, and two dwelling units. The rezoning area also includes a three-story commercial and residential building at the intersection of Steinway Street and 23rd Avenue, and a one- and two-story building with an auto body and repair shop and office space with frontages on both Steinway Street and 23rd Avenue. There's also a three-story multifamily residential building included in the rezoning area shown here on the right. The applicant seeks a C23 commercial overlay over the 23rd Avenue block front of Block 805. The proposed commercial overlay is consistent with established land use patterns in the surrounding area, and C23 overlays are also mapped along Did Mars Boulevard to the northeast. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Cirillo.
Just a question, and I understand what's happening here, but bring me back to the rezoning. So was this an established business at that time?
Yes. So this has been commercial or industrial since 1911.
Okay. Was this particular business use existing at the time of the rezoning?
I can verify.
And if it was, was it legal at the time, and then something we did made it not legal? I'm just trying to get the, I mean, I get the facts, and I know where we're headed with this, which is, at this point, not an issue, but I just want to understand how this happened, where, obviously, there were areas that did not have a commercial overlay that had one laid on it, and then was there one here that was removed? What, if it was there already, was it permissible, and then we made it a legal, non-conforming? And so I'm just trying to figure out how they got into this situation.
Sure, I can clarify the exact history of the property at a future presentation.
Thank you.
And a somewhat related question. Do we know why this particular block was not included, or wasn't mapped with a commercial overlay in 2010? The history would be helpful.
Sure. Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yeah, that was my question as well. But these particular applications for special permits for these physical cultural establishments, that is the particular purview of BSA? Is that why he's going to BSA?
Yes. So this is the first step. They require this commercial zoning before BSA would consider applications for those uses.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. Back to parking. I have some questions. A C23 overlay triggers commercial parking requirements that, this is in a transit zone, and they're actually quite high. How does this facility comply with those requirements? And it's, I did not see, it's not clear what the requirements are for a physical cultural establishment. You know, for food stores or for general retail, it's 1 per 400 or 2.5 per 1,000. For food stores over 2,000 square feet, it's 3.3 per 1,000. Those are very high for urban areas where almost half of residents don't have cars. So it would be, what is the current situation with parking? Are they complying? What is the plan under, you know, the new scenario? And what is the requirement of physical cultural establishments? Those are my questions.
Sure, I can follow up with the applicant and follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Can I just add to that? This is a bigger question. I think that, you know, we continue to come across that we have transit overlays, and we have commercial zoning that does not reflect the lower parking requirements that, or I should say, the lower parking demand that we might see in those areas. So it's just a big-picture issue that I know, as we look at sustainability writ large, would be worthy of consideration.
Agreed. So much of our zoning stems back to '61, which was the height of car culture. Other questions? Then the application is certified.
The third item on the agenda, page 42, is a referral of a zoning map amendment, or zoning text amendment, sorry, in Queens, Community District 2. Blake Montieth will again present.
Again, good afternoon, Chair Lago, Commissioners. This is a private application to facilitate the development of a new mixed residential and commercial building in Long Island City, Community District 2, Queens. The owner of a site near the intersection of 45th Avenue and 23rd Street seeks relief from bulk regulations defined in the special Long Island City Mixed Use District in order to significantly reduce their overall tower height and create more efficient floor plans. The requested amendment would allow the applicant to reduce the tower height from about 70 stories down to about 45 stories. The proposed development would include about 250 market-rate residential units, above eight stories of commercial space, including a first-floor retail space and seven stories of office space. The applicant also intends to pursue an "as-of-right" option to provide subway improvements to the Court Square Station in exchange for additional floor area on this site. The applicant is currently negotiating details with the MTA at the moment on what specifically would be included in this agreement, but they do plan to build a new street-to-platform elevator, or system of elevators, between the street and the platform for the Manhattan-bound E&amp;M platform of the Court Square Station, among other improvements. The applicant plans to file a separate application with the Department of City Planning for the Chair of the Commission to certify these improvements. The Court Square sub-district of the special Long Island City Mixed Use District is located in the Court Square neighborhood of Long Island City, in the center of the special mixed-use district, and it is surrounded by three subway stations connecting residents and workers to the E, M, 7, and G lines directly adjacent to the sub-district itself. And stations for the N, W, R, and F lines are also in close walking distance. The Court Square sub-district, shown here in a dotted black line, includes three blocks. The sub-district is zoned C53, and this district allows for a 15-floor area ratio for commercial uses and up to 12-floor area ratio for residential uses if income-restricted units are included. The southernmost block is referred to as Block 3 in the special district text and is coterminous with tax Block 80. Block 3 is outlined here in red. The area surrounding Block 3 is highly mixed use, with residential, commercial, and manufacturing uses all within 600 feet of the block. The Hunter's Point Historic District is located west of Block 3 and preserves an established four-story residential character. The development site, shown here in red, includes five multifamily walk-up buildings. A zoning lot merger would also include a two- and three-story building at the intersection of Jackson Avenue and 45th Avenue, but only the lots shown here in red would be redeveloped. Toyoko Inn, an international hotel company, plans to build a new hotel on the adjacent Lot 4, shown here in yellow. The proposed text amendment would alter the street wall height and setback requirements along 23rd Street and 45th Avenue for the frontages of the development site. Along 23rd Street, there's currently a 60-foot tower setback area, shown in red and with an "A," with a maximum street wall height of 85 feet. The proposed amendment would reduce the tower setback from 60 feet to 20 feet and raise the maximum street wall height to 125 feet. That's shown on the right. Along 45th Avenue, the underlying tower encroachment rules that are associated with the C53 zoning district further require setbacks of 20 feet or more above the street wall height, and this is shown in green and with a "B" on the plan on the left. The proposed amendment would supersede the tower encroachment rules with a 15-foot tower setback from 45th Avenue and an 85-foot street wall height. The proposed actions would overall allow the applicant to expand the typical tower floor plate from about 3,375 square feet to about 6,300 square feet. 23rd Street is covered overhead by the elevated 7-line. The development site, highlighted in red in the image on the right, includes three, sorry, four three-story residential buildings fronting 23rd Street that were built in 1891. And as you can see in this image, the elevated 7 rail line creates a clear visual division between the higher-density commercial sub-district located to the east of the line and the lower-density residential district located to the west. The 45th Avenue frontage of the development site includes three three-story residential buildings built in 1911. And on the right, you can see the two- and three-story existing commercial building that would remain in place. Based on current Court Square sub-district requirements, the applicant could build a 70-story tower to maximize their floor area. An "as-of-right" tower in this case would be higher than the city core tower, and this is, of course, the tallest building in Long Island City at the moment. The applicant seeks to lower the height of the tower to reduce overall construction expenses and create a more efficient building floor plan. Focusing on the changes of the special district text itself, the sub-district currently applies a special height regulations area over the 23rd Street frontages of the sub-district, and this requires, as I mentioned earlier, a 60-foot setback from 23rd Street. This provision was intended to encourage tower portions of new development on these blocks in the entire sub-district to be located along Jackson Avenue away from the Hunter's Point Historic District and the elevated rail. While the proposed 20-foot setback from 23rd Street would allow for the tower to be closer to these areas, this is still significantly higher setback than what is typically required in the zoning resolution for wide streets, and that's typically a 10-foot setback. The southern boundary of the special height regulations area would be shifted north to 45th Avenue to exclude Block 3 from these provisions. And as I mentioned, it would require a 20-foot setback. The special height regulations area also allows for up to an 85-foot street wall height along 23rd Street. This would be replaced with a maximum street wall height of 125 feet. The underlying tower encroachment regulations apply to the 45th Avenue frontage of the building. The applicant seeks to supersede this requirement with a 15-foot setback from 45th Avenue above an 85-foot maximum base height. In summary, the proposed actions would result in a total reduction in tower height from about 70 stories to 45 stories, and this would be facilitated by reducing both the 23rd Street and 45th Avenue setback requirements and allowing a higher street wall height along 23rd Street. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Deloos.
Hi. Do you know if they've been in consultation with the community board already before this gets certified?
They are meeting with the community board soon, but they have not met with the community board yet.
Okay. So that certification will be the first time they're really having a formal conversation?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
I imagine that the requirement for the, the current requirement for the setback on 23rd Street is to set buildings back away from the elevated train line, which seems, you know, is something we've imposed on other sites around the city, and certainly in a residential building is a desirable feature. Why should we be changing it here, except for building efficiency?
Sure.
I mean, I understand that argument, but what about the, you know, the things that underlay the policy that got us to the setback in the first place?
Sure. I think that, overall, when this sub-district was enacted in, I believe, 1986, the intention was that these blocks would be built out with a much, I would say, less irregular lot assemblage. So you can see here that the lot assemblage that they have assembled, that they've been able to assemble, really does not provide them much flexibility to build what they hope to build as-of-right. And so while we certainly intend to, you know, provide a setback in this case, I think that, overall, we feel that the 20-foot setback still provides enough of a setback from the railway itself to align with the original intent of this district.
Okay. And to what extent have building practices changed, improved, so that having apartments overhanging the 7 train are not quite so burdensome?
I could provide more details.
Okay. And then one other question is about the existing older buildings that are on the site and apparently soon not to be on the site. What kind of residential units are in there? Are there any rent-regulated units? And where are those tenants going?
To my knowledge, they are not rent-regulated units, but I can ask the applicant to provide more information about the transition of those residents.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then we will be referring this simultaneously to the community board and the borough president for 45 days.
Okay. Yeah. The fourth item on the agenda, page 61, is a certification of zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn, Community District 11. Sayad Ahmed is here to present.
The applicant requests a zoning map amendment from R5B-C23 to R6AC23 and a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area. The rezoning area is located on the north side of Avenue U between Lake Street and McDonald Avenue in the Gravesend neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 11. The applicant's site outlined in red dashed line covers only a quarter of the rezoning area fronting on Avenue U. The proposed actions will facilitate the development of a four-story mixed-use building with nine units and ground-floor commercial space on applicant's Lot 42. It will also bring two existing overbuilt structures on Lots 40 and 138 into compliance. The surrounding neighborhood is predominantly developed with residential uses consisting of two- to three-story detached and semi-detached homes, three- to four-story walk-ups, to seven-story apartment buildings and community facility uses. The East-West Avenue U is the main commercial thoroughfare in the neighborhood and is developed with one- and two-story residential buildings with ground-floor commercial spaces and several large apartment buildings. McDonald Avenue is the major north-south artery with elevated F train line and is developed with low-rise residential buildings and one-story commercial and automotive uses. Avenue F train station on McDonald Avenue is adjacent to the project area, and it is shown here in yellow. The area The area is generally zoned R-41, R-4A, R-5, R-5B, and R-6A, which permits medium-to-low-density residential uses at FARs of .75, 1.25, 1.35, and 3, respectively. McDonald Avenue frontage is zoned R-4, R-4A, M-1, and C-81 districts. M-11 and C-81 districts permit light industrial and automotive uses at an FAR of 1. The project area is well-served by public transportation, including F train station at Avenue U and McDonald Avenue, which is next to the project area. The B-3 bus provides service along Avenue U corridor. The project area outlined in black dotted line comprises of a block front on the north side of Avenue U with six tax lots. The applicant's site is outlined here in red, which makes up a quarter of the project area. The applicant's site, Lot 42, is an irregular-shaped lot shown here, located at the corner of Avenue U and Lake Street. It is developed with one-story commercial building, which is occupied by five commercial and retail tenants. Lot 40 is located at the corner of Avenue U and McDonald Avenue and is developed with a two-story mixed-use building constructed in 1931 with ground-floor commercial space and a residential unit above. Lot 138 is north of Lot 40. It fronts on McDonald Avenue and is developed with a two-story mixed-use building constructed in 2007 and is occupied by a commercial use. Lot 36 is also fronts on McDonald Avenue. Only 1/3 of this lot is in project area, zoned R-5B-C-23, while the remaining 2/3 of this lot is in adjacent M-11 zoning district, which is mapped along McDonald Avenue frontage. The lot is developed with a one-story building occupied by an automotive business. Lot 38C is north of applicant's lot. It fronts on Lake Street. It is developed with a four-story building with 12 dwelling units and ground-floor community facility use. Lot 49 is next to Lot 38C. Only 69 square feet of this lot in the graveyard is in the project area. The single-family residential building on this lot is entirely in an R-4A district mapped along Lake Street. The applicant proposes to build a new four-story, 47-feet-high, mixed-use building with a total floor area of 16,930 square feet and at an FAR of 3 on their site. The building will have 11,900 square feet of residential floor area and approximately 5,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space. There will be nine dwelling units, consisting of three one-bedroom and six two-bedroom apartments. No parking would be provided, as the proposed development is nine dwelling units and less than five parking spaces are waived by the Department of Buildings. In order to facilitate this proposed project and create a rational zoning area, the applicant is proposing to extend an existing R-6A zoning district from the east to the entire block front on the north side of Avenue U. That would cover the development site as well as other lots. The proposed rezoning from R-5B to R-6A district will not only facilitate the applicant's development, but will also bring two non-compliant structures into compliance. Those structures are located on Lots 40 and 138. The existing R-5B district that was mapped in 2006 permits residential FAR of 1.35 and commercial FAR of 1. The maximum building height in R-5B district is 33 feet. The proposed R-6A district will permit residential development at an FAR of 3.6 for residential uses with an MIH area mapping. The R-6A district has a base height of 40 to 65 feet and a maximum building height of 85 feet or eight stories. The C-23 commercial overlay would remain as is and would permit commercial uses at an FAR of 2 in the proposed R-6A district. The applicant also proposes to map the entire project area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area, option 1. However, the inclusionary housing requirement only applies to projects with at least 10 dwelling units or 12,500 square feet of residential floor area. Since the proposed development would be below the specified threshold of the MIH requirements, it would not provide any affordable units. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. So I noted that the building height is gonna max out at 47 feet.
Yes.
But the R-6A, as of right, would permit them to go up to 80, 85 feet.
Yes.
So my concern is that, once we, obviously, if we approve this, should we approve this, that the building height is not restricted? I don't think in R-6, I don't think, I'm not opposed to the FAR. I'm opposed to the height of 80 feet on that side of the street, going north past 100 feet from McDonald, going west past 100 feet from McDonald Avenue. So my concern, again, is a height concern, once it's past the approval stage.
The applicant, you know, proposes a building with only nine units and 47 feet height. And if they do, you know, the only, if they do use the entire FAR, they could go up to maybe 57 feet. They cannot, like, you know, use the entire, you know, eight-story frontage. But the zoning does allow that.
All right. And that's my concern. I don't have a problem with it on the McDonald's side.
Yes.
I think going more west, it's problematic, especially looking at the zoning map on the height.
In terms of FAR, they max out at five stories.
Okay. That's my concern. Thank you.
Commissioner Deloos.
So if they use their full FAR, they would be triggering the MIH because they'd have over the 12,500 square feet?
If they use the full FAR, they will. They will get probably 12 to 13 units on the site, but they are opting not to.
So they're asking for waiver but providing no affordable housing?
Waiver for, the waiver is for parking.
I understand.
Yes. Waiver is for parking.
Understood. Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
The fifth item on our agenda, page 81, is a pre-hearing review of an acquisition for continued use as a childcare center in Brooklyn Community District 2. Kevin Kraft is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application by the Administration for Children's Services, the Department for the Aging, and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services. They are seeking the acquisition of an existing building to facilitate the continued operation of a childcare center and senior center located at 460 Atlantic Avenue in downtown Brooklyn Community District 2. ACS and DIFTA have operated a childcare center and senior center at this location since 1972. A previous application was approved by the City Planning Commission and executed in December 1999 with a term limit of up to 20 years. That existing lease will expire in December of 2019. The project area is located at the corner of Atlantic Avenue and Nevin Street with frontages on both streets. The land uses in the surrounding area are primarily residential, characterized by a mix of three-to-four-story brownstones and six-to-seven-story multifamily apartments and community facilities. The childcare and senior center occupy the entire four-story privately-owned building, including the cellar and rooftop play area. The building comprises a total of approximately 45,000 square feet. The childcare and senior center's primary entrance is located on Atlantic Avenue, just shown here, behind the bus, shown here. And the senior center occupies the cellar and first floor, while the childcare facility occupies the second, third, and fourth floors, including two outdoor play areas. The center serves up to 114 children under a license from the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene and is operated by 26 professional, paraprofessional, and support staff. The second floor is the primary floor for the childcare facility and contains five classrooms and four staff offices, along with a small outdoor play area and conference room, which is shown here. The third floor contains two classrooms, a staff lounge, multipurpose rooms, a kitchen, and storage rooms. And the fourth floor has a rooftop play area, a staff lounge, as well as storage space. The senior center's primary entrance is also located on Atlantic Avenue and occupies space on the first floor for accessibility purposes. It is open from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The senior center space includes administrative offices and a commercial-grade kitchen, where staff serve an average of 40 breakfasts, 90 lunches, and to about 100 senior citizens daily. The center is operated by 23 staff members. The senior center also includes recreational rooms, such as a computer lab, game room, and other social gathering spaces. The scope of work for the building includes the installation of a sprinkler system, as well as suggested improvements for the urban design to help enhance the appearance of the building. Department of City Planning staff toured the facility on October 11, 2018, with ACS, DIFTA, and program staff, and confirmed that the facility was in a state of good repair. On December 12, 2018, Community Board 2 submitted a letter waiving the opportunity to hold a public hearing. And on January 7, 2019, the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing on this acquisition request. There were no speakers on the item. And on January 22, the Borough President recommended approval of the requested action. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
So, Mr. Kraft, is this an acquisition of a lease or of the actual building? Because in your report, you say acquisition of an existing building.
It would be a lease.
Okay. So there's no lease term. Is, are we doing minimally 10 years now for these leases?
Yes. Right now, they're looking at 10 years.
When this came before us for certification, it was noted that the term was 20 years. Could you clarify that?
Originally, they were in negotiations with the landlord, and they were looking at 20 years. Since that time, it has now been reduced to 10 years, and I believe that ACS and DCAST are still working out an agreement, and they can clarify how that changed in that timeframe.
So there's no possibility of an acquisition of the building in this case?
Not that we're aware of, but we can have the applicants clarify that on Wednesday at the public hearing.
Okay.
Commissioner Deloos.
I mean, I would just point out that this building is supportive housing and that these facilities are part and parcel of the larger building.
Other questions? We'll see this then at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Okay. The sixth item on the agenda, page 116, is a pre-hearing review of an acquisition for continued use as a childcare center in Brooklyn Community District 5. Alexandra Patti Diaz is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a proposed action by NYC ACS and NYC DCAST for the public facility acquisition to facilitate the continued use of Urban Strategies Daycare Center as a childcare facility. The daycare is located in East New York neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 5, at 1091 Sutter Avenue, on the southwest corner of Sutter Avenue between Montauk and Atkins Avenues, within an R-5 zoning district. The East New York rezoning area is located two blocks north of the site. The Miracle Tabernacle Church is located on the same block of the daycare. And the daycare is close to public transportation, mainly served by Shepard Avenue Station and Oakley Avenue Station. The daycare is located on a 15,000-square-feet privately-owned lot. The building is two stories and includes a total floor area of approximately 35,000 square feet. The daycare center occupies approximately 32,000 square feet and currently shares the building with a small 2,600-square-foot health clinic operated by the Health and Hospital Corporation. This application is for the lease acquisition of the entire 35,000 building, square feet thousand. The center serves up to 145 preschoolers aged from 3 to 5 years old. Children may attend from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM from Monday through Friday. The center is staffed with 40 professional, paraprofessionals, and support staff. The building includes a classroom, two playgrounds, office area, as well as several storage, mechanical rooms, and janitor's closet, and a main kitchen. CB5 Full Board submitted on Friday. Their forms, I believe, we distributed to the Commissioners, and they approved this application with no conditions. The Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing in January 7 of this year and approved the application with no conditions. CPC, a public hearing, is scheduled for next Wednesday. I'm open to answer any questions.
Any questions? We'll hear this at the public hearing on Wednesday. Thank you.
The seventh item on the agenda, page 142, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District 8. Jonah Rogoff is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application returning for prehearing for 1010 Pacific Street LLC. The applicant for a zoning map amendment from an M-11 district to an R-7D district with a C-24 commercial overlay and a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing, or MIH, area to facilitate an 11-story mixed-use development with a total of 154 units and commercial and community facility space on the ground floor. If you recall, at the previous review session, when this application was certified, we just wanted to remind the Commission that this is within the M-Crown study area, along with the upcoming item. And just as a point of reference, wanted to, again, show the draft framework, along with the sub-areas, and we'll have this on view at the end of the presentation as well. The project area is located in the Crown Heights neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 8. The project area lies on the northeast portion of a block bounded by Pacific Street to the north, Dean Street to the south, Grand Avenue to the west, and Classen Avenue to the east. The surrounding area contains a mix of parking, commercial, industrial, and auto-oriented uses, while the area outside the M-11 zoned area is predominantly residential. The area is well-served by public transit with access to the C Line and the Franklin Avenue shuttle at Fulton Street and Franklin Avenue, as well as several bus routes that run nearby. Just as a reminder, here's an aerial view showing the project area outlined in orange and the development site shaded in red. The entire block is zoned M-11, a manufacturing district that permits commercial and industrial use up to 1 FAR and limited community facility use up to 2.4 FAR, while new residential is not permitted as of right. The development site is an approximately 26,000-square-foot lot, consisting of a two-story vacant building and an unapproved parking lot next door. Due to the mid-block location of the site, the rezoning boundary extends to Classen Avenue, a north-south corridor that helps enable the zoning district boundary to be rational and part of a well-considered plan. Just another view to see the project area of 1010 Pacific in context with the next item on the agenda, 1050 Pacific, and we'll show this again for reference in the following Here's a view looking southwest at the corner of Pacific Street and Classen Avenue, showing the auto supply business at the corner and the non-conforming residential uses to the right. Here's a view of the Pacific Street corridor with the proposed development site on the And then lastly, another view of the site on the left side of the screen. And then on the right, a view of the Classen Avenue corridor, looking north towards Pacific Street, with the project area on the left side of that photo. The applicant proposes to develop an 11-story mixed-use building with approximately 145,000 square feet of floor area totaling 5.6 FAR, with setbacks on the 6 and 9 floors. The development would contain 154 units, 39 of which should be affordable pursuant to MIH option 1, which requires 25% of the residential floor area be permanently affordable at or below 60% of the area median income, or AMI, with 10% of that floor area at or below 40% AMI. On the ground floor of the proposed development, there would be approximately 7,000 square feet of commercial- feet of commercial space and 4,300 square feet of community facility space, which is intended to be led by a nonprofit arts center. And then 49 enclosed parking spaces would be located in the cellar. To facilitate, actually, just before discussing that, this is another illustrative rendering, just showing the view along Pacific Street with the proposed development on the right side. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment to rezone an M11 district to an R7D C24 district over the northeast portion of the block. As a refresher, R7D allows a maximum FAR of 5.6 for residential use and a maximum base and building height of 90 feet and 110 feet, respectively, which may be increased by 5 feet with a qualifying ground floor. Off-street parking is generally required for 50% of the market rate units and optional for income-restricted units within the transit zone. The C24 district is a commercial overlay that allows up to 2 FAR of commercial when paired with an R7D district. It also triggers a non-residential ground floor requirement within 30 feet of the building's frontage. The applicant also seeks a zoning text amendment to match both MIH options and has selected Option 1 for the development proposal. Community Board Eight recommended to disapprove the application with conditions by a vote of 22 opposed, none in favor, and three abstentions. The Board recommended to first reduce the rezoning area boundaries to 230 feet of Classen Avenue, which would essentially exclude the non-applicant-owned sites; second, to adjust the proposed zoning district to an MX district in order to reduce the non-residential parking requirement; third, to change the residential district from an R7D density, which permits up to 5.6 FAR, to an R7A density, which permits up to 4.6 FAR, and obtain a commitment from the applicant to cap the residential density at an R6A level of 3.6 FAR, and then set aside the balanced floor area for non-residential use. And then, in the absence of that commitment, the Board recommended to further adjust the zoning to an M14 R6A hearing. And then lastly, in the context of the ongoing discussions around M-Crown and the study we're engaged with, department staff would again like to express a concern that while the proposal does align with the vision of housing and job growth outlined in the framework, the scale of the development is higher than what was intended specifically for a mid-block side street. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
I assume we haven't heard from the Borough President?
We have not.
Okay. The one thing I'll note is that the proposal from the Community Board on this project, and as we'll see on 1050, would propose to create exactly the mid-block donut hole zoning that we had flagged at the time of certification as causing concern. Certainly, to the department, we find it difficult to see how to mid-block rezonings, which is what the Community Board would have us scale back to, could be seen as being consistent with a rational land use plan. The one other thing, two other things that I'll note. One is that the proposal for an MX rezoning would be out of scope. However, the Community Board's recommendation that it be not R7D, but rather R7A, is very much in line with what the department had recommended to the applicant prior to the certification. Questions? Commissioner Deloos.
Can you go over in some detail where the overall M-Crown process is at? And how, I mean, it's helpful to know that the department believes that the scale of the development is higher in the mid-block than you thought appropriate. Be helpful, I think, to get a little bit more background about where the proposal is at, and also, I believe it's not just scale, but also the types of uses that are, that the Community Board has been working on as part of the process with the department for the last couple of years. And then finally, I know I raised this at certification, but, you know, just looking at this project and, of course, the other one, what potential there is for loss of existing rent-stabilized units?
On the last point, I would just like to point out that we did check the state's website, I believe, DHCR. Actually, the two residential buildings shown in the rendering, the left, they, we don't know the exact number, but they are listed on the state's registry as containing at least one rent-regulated unit. Regarding the status of the study, so following our framework that we shared earlier, almost a year ago, actually, we've had ongoing discussions with the Community Board and other stakeholders about how to achieve kind of a mixed-use framework for the entire neighborhood, and part of that involves potentially new tools that we have to develop to really achieve a true mix, as embodied by, you know, both what the Community Board envisions and also what's kind of feasible and appropriate based on sound land use policy. So those discussions are still ongoing, and they're meaningful. And actually, the, a couple representatives from the Community Board intend to speak at the public hearing. And then lastly, I would just like to mention that we just, earlier today, received a package of some materials from the Community Board, sharing more info, and those are expected to be distributed later this week to the Commission. And then I think at post-hearing follow-up, we can give, you know, a more robust response for the, I think, I don't want to hog the conversation, but I think for the purposes of these two projects, we wanted to kind of give the Commission kind of the foundation of information to understand more, but we can certainly provide more.
I can give a little bit more context now. I had the great opportunity to walk the neighborhood with Councilmember Combo, and there are areas where we are in active discussions with the Community Board and with other representatives where we have disagreements on land use. A perfect example is for a project like this, there is a desire to not allow residential on the ground floor in the mid-blocks, and we certainly like, in line with what Commissioner Otis frequently raises, like to see the retail use, the active ground floor use along Classen Avenue, rather than on the quieter and narrower side streets. So that's one example. Another is a desire to mandate industrial uses in all spaces. We believe that history has shown us that mandating it as opposed to incenting it can lead both to enforcement problems, but more just to empty space in areas that, where we see the potential to have a more vibrant residential neighborhood. And then the final issue that I would note is that we are frequently seeing requests to micromanage within use groups and to say, we like bicycle repair shops, we don't like shops that sell bicycles, and a degree of micromanaging that we think is just not consistent with the idea of having a zoning that lives for more than just a year or two. So those are some of the areas in which we're in active discussion with the community representatives. Yes, Commissioner Otis?
Thank you. You raised a point that I had wanted to raise, and I, I'm struggling to sort of look at these two projects independently when it comes to the, you know, the plans for commercial. You know, when I look at the zoning map, you know, I see what are very rational districts along Washington and Atlantic of C24 overlays, and then, and then in this case, you know, we have a little orphaned C24 district that, you know, I'm not, I'm not quite sure if I understand the land use rationale for creating this somewhat isolated little pocket of retail offerings that we're not even quite sure there's sufficient demand for. You know, do the developers have a sense of who would go into these spaces? And it's for both of them, because collectively, they would create over almost 23,000 square feet of retail. And I think we need to think about it that way. Are we, in fact, creating a new district here? That's like a small neighborhood shopping center, smaller than, which is about 30,000 square feet of neighborhood shopping center. So, you know, do those, do they work together, in fact, to create, you know, thoughtful co-location among businesses, which would help them lease those spaces? And that's a question, but just why, why would we want retail here when we've got, you know, Washington Avenue and Atlantic as real commercial districts that are well-defined and meaningful?
Those are great questions, and I would partly defer that to the applicant team for both, and they can speak to the tenants and types of uses they're intending to occupy the space. I would say that we, I think we view these applications as part of a broader framework for M-Crown, and we see this as not just a place for housing, but kind of its own unique and as a job hub outside of downtown Brooklyn. And so I think where our framework is thinking more broadly besides, you know, in addition to retail, what are kind of the opportunities for other types of commercial, like office, some of which have already kind of been locating in parts of M-Crown and rehabbing older buildings? So our, our thought is that in addition to retail, we would be more holistic of other office and, and commercial uses, which kind of, but I think where you raise a good question in terms of the viability and, you know, how these, especially on a mid-block, and it's, I think those are policy questions that we're also kind of considering as well, and goes to the chair's point about ways to incentivize versus requiring.
And I'll note that your question is, again, another reason why we're concerned about the donut hole. When the overlay was across the entirety of the block, our expectation would have been that one would see non-residential ground floors more likely along Classen Avenue, which already has a more commercial feel to it, rather than along the quiet side street here.
Yeah. I mean, I would imagine find some trouble, have some trouble tenanting a mid-block space like this, so, thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
I have two questions. One is, has the tenant for the art space been identified? Do we know who that is?
They, they have not been identified, and they're in, still in active discussions with the councilmember, who's been a strong proponent of that, to help select a tenant.
Okay, so there's a, there's a desire for an art space, and they're out looking for one?
That's correct.
Right. A difficult hunt sometimes. I hope, I'm glad the Community Board is coming to testify. You said representatives would show up?
Yes.
Because I'd like to hear a little bit more about their idea of recommending that the residential zoning be changed to an R7A, but that the, that the district be changed to an R7A, but that the development be limited to R6A. I guess that gets to this mixed-use quality, but it's a unusual way to express it.
And we can also relay that to the, the Community Board representative, and we're in touch with them, and...
Yeah. So it's not, my question is not a skepticism, it's just to help me understand. Tell me more, please.
Okay.
The other thing is that an R6B would not be within scope, given what the application has filed.
Right.
But I think the Community Board, perhaps being aware of that, talked about doing it voluntarily.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right.
Yes, Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. I'm just going to go on the record about the R7A. I'm in support of it. I don't think I'm going to be here on Wednesday to say that, but I do support the department's conclusion and the Community Board's conclusion that the proper zoning is an R7A on this site. Thanks.
More questions? Then we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
The eighth item on the agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn, Community District Eight. Jonah, again, will present.
So this is an application by 1050 Pacific, the applicant, for a zoning map amendment from an M11 district to an M14/R7A district, and a zoning text amendment to establish a mixed-use or MX district and a mandatory inclusionary housing, or MIH, area to facilitate an eight-story mixed-use development with 103 residential units and commercial space on the ground floor. As described in the previous presentation, the project area is located in Crown Heights and Community District Eight. The project area lies on the western portion of a block bounded by Pacific Street to the north, Dean Street to the south, Classen Avenue to the west, and Franklin Avenue to the east. As noted in the prior presentation, the area contains a mix of parking, commercial, industrial, and auto, and auto-oriented uses, with residential prominently located to the south and several public transit options nearby. Again, here's a bird's-eye view of the project area and the development site, shaded in red. The project area encompasses, excuse me, sorry. Sorry, the development site is an approximately 23,180-foot square, square-foot-through lot with frontages on both Dean Street and Pacific Street, currently used as truck parking. The project area also includes a few warehouses and a vacant lot, which is sometimes used by, for the Westminian Carnival celebration. Again, just showing a view of the 1050 Pacific Street project area in relation to 1010 Pacific Street across the street. And then just a few images of the frontage facing Classen Avenue. A view of Pacific Street looking east from Classen Avenue. A view of Dean Street, also looking east from Classen Avenue. And then finally, a view of the development site, which, as I mentioned, is currently used as truck parking. The applicant proposes to develop an eight-story building with approximately 105,670 square feet of floor area totaling 4.56 FAR, with a setback on the sixth floor. The proposed development would contain 103 units, of which 33 would be affordable pursuant to MIH Option 2, which requires 30% of the residential floor area be permanently affordable at or below 80% of the AMI. Here's also a view of the Dean Street frontages, just highlighting the different types of facade treatment they intend to do. Additionally, approximately 15,800 square feet of commercial space is being proposed on the ground floor with 42 enclosed parking spaces within the cellar. To facilitate the proposal, the applicant seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone an M11 district to an M14/R7A district over the western portion of the block. R7A allows up to 4.6 FAR for residential use and a maximum base and building height of 75 and 95 feet, respectively. Off-street parking is generally required for 50% of the market rate units and optional for income-restricted units within the transit zone. The M14 district is a manufacturing district that permits up to 2 FAR for commercial, industrial use, with no off-street parking requirement. The applicant also seeks a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area with Options 1 and 2, coterminous with a rezoning area, and a selected Option 2 for the proposed development. Community Board Eight recommended to approve the application with conditions by a vote of 24 in favor, none opposed, and one abstention. In their recommendation, the Board recommended to reduce the rezoning area to 100 feet of Classen Avenue in order to exclude the non-applicant-owned lots, adjust the residential Classen Avenue in order to exclude the non-applicant-owned lots, adjust the residential floor area to cap the residential density at an R6A equivalent, 3.6, and then set aside the remaining floor area for non-residential use, change the MIH option from option two to option one, and then mandate that 0.25 FAR of the non-residential use be for light industrial and artisan-related uses. This, we also received the borough president's recommendation, which is, which was enclosed separately from the briefing package, and to summarize, the, the borough president recommended also to, to limit the rezoning area from, to 100 feet from Classen Avenue and change the, and restrict the, the FAR to R6A with additional non-residential floor area. That would also limit the, the use within 30 feet of the frontage to M Crown uses, which are essentially the light industrial and artisan uses. Also to change the MIH option and increase the mix of two or three bedroom units, selected a local nonprofit as the administrating agent, engage car-sharing companies for the parking area, along with resiliency and sustainability measures. And then finally, select Brooklyn-based contractors in line with the LBE and MWBE programs for the project. And then that, and also for further reference, we just wanted to show a zoning change map with both of the, the 1010 and 1050 projects side by side. And that concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
And on this one, I'll note, we have the same concerns about the mid-block donut hole, although in this instance, we are comfortable with the proposed R7A zoning, which we would be comfortable as a matter of density on the other project, on 1010, as a department. Questions? Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. If the applicant could speak to the community board's recommendation for setting aside a percentage of space for light industrial on Wednesday?
Absolutely.
Other questions? Commissioner Deloos.
And similarly, if they can speak to the community board's recommendation related to changing the MIH option, limiting it to one.
Other comments? Then we'll hear this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The ninth item on the agenda, page 208, is a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District 14. This is returning for pre-hearing. Anthony Grande is our presenter.
Good afternoon. This is a private application, returning for pre-hearing by 1640 Flatbush Owner LLC for zoning map and text amendments to facilitate the development of a new 13-story mixed-use building in the Flatbush Junction neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District 14. The project location, as I mentioned, is in Community District 14, near the border with 17 and 18. The proposed development site is outlined in blue on the aerial. It's a former gas station site that has been unused since 2017. It's an approximately 18,000-square-foot irregular lot with frontage on Flatbush Avenue, a 100-foot wide street, and Aurelia Court. The surrounding area contains a mix of uses, including regional commercial, local retail, residential, and large-scale institutional use. Most of the surrounding residential buildings are six stories in height, with the exception of the 20-story building directly across Flatbush Avenue from the project area. Directly north of the project area is the Triangle Junction Mall, a regional-scale commercial center with three floors of retail, including many large floorplate retailers totaling approximately 260,000 square feet. The area is well-served by public transit. Two blocks north of the project area is the MTA 2 and 5 train Flatbush Avenue Brooklyn College Station. The proposed development would be a new 13-story, approximately 130,000-square-foot mixed-use building, containing approximately 114 residential units, for a total FAR of 7.2. Pursuant to MIH option two, 34 of the units would be permanently affordable MIH units at an average of 80% AMI. The building would contain approximately 30,000 square feet of retail floor area on the, on the first and second floors, and residential floor area above on floors three through, through 13. The proposed building would rise to a total height of 142 feet with setbacks at various heights pursuant to the maximum base height of 105 feet. The building would provide approximately 40 parking spaces in the cellar level by a curb cut located on Aurelia Court pursuant to a zoning requirement of 50% for the, the non-income-restricted units. This is a view of the proposed development from Aurelia Court. In order to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant requests two actions. First is a zoning map amendment. This map shows the existing zoning. The development site is primarily within the CA2 districts and also a portion within the R6. This map shows the proposed zoning districts. The proposed development site would be changed to a C44D district. On the two non-applicant-owned sites to the west, the CA2 district would be changed to R6, essentially extending the R6 district north to cover the entirety of those two lots. Both lots contain existing six-story apartment buildings that are currently overbuilt for the R6 zoning. The resulting zoning map would have no split zoning district conditions on any of the three lots. C44D districts are contextual general commercial districts with a residential equivalent of R8A. They allow a range of commercial uses to a maximum FAR of 3.4 and residential uses to a maximum FAR of 7.2 with MIH. The maximum base height is 105 feet, and the maximum building height is 145 feet or 14 stories. Second, the applicant seeks a zoning text amendment to map an MIH area, coterminous with the proposed C44D district. The MIH option would be option two. This application was certified on October 29th, 2018. On December 10th, 2018, Brooklyn Community Board 14 voted to recommend approval with conditions, 26 in favor, zero opposed, and two abstaining. The community board asked the applicants to conduct a shadow study to analyze the impact of shadows from the proposed development on the neighboring building across the street, the results of which were included in the community board recommendations, submittal also included in, in your briefing package. The other two recommendations from the community board were regarding relocating entrances and loading to Flatbush Avenue from Aurelia Court and to utilize MIH option two instead of option one. On January 22nd, 2019, the Brooklyn Borough President issued recommendations, issued a recommendation to approve with conditions. Conditions are listed on the screen, also included in full in the briefing package. I'll note that two conditions are sort of a crossover between both, MIH option one, and then also Borough President mentioned relocating the loading dock, in this, this case, to the Mall Service Road rather than on Flatbush Avenue. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Deloos.
Speaking to the loading docks, if we could get a site plan which really shows them, that would be helpful. And I get, the service, the Mall Service Road, I guess, is the road that's to the north?
Yes.
Okay. Because it's not a mapped street, is really what it's.
No, it's not a street. It's a, I guess it's.
That space.
Yeah. It's a privately owned sort of driveway that is used by the mall for loading. And so I guess the, the suggestion would be to, you know, work out an agreement to utilize that as well for this development.
Okay. Thanks.
With respect to the loading docks, the department would have concerns about encouraging curb cuts on Flatbush Avenue, and we thought it was beyond the scope of the application because it involves another private landowner, but a wise recommendation from the borough president to encourage looking at that. Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. If the applicant could speak to the borough president's recommendation about the family-size units?
Sure.
Thank you.
Other comments? Then we'll see this on Wednesday at the public hearing.
Okay. The 10th item on the agenda, page 217, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Manhattan Community District Six. Nibila Malek is here to present.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is an application by 245 East 53rd Street Realty LLC for a zoning map amendment to add a C25 commercial overlay to an existing R8B district along the interior portion of East 53rd Street between Second and Third Avenues, known as the project area, which is the yellow dotted line, impacting 27 properties, one of which is applicant-owned. The action would facilitate the conversion of a ground-floor community facility space to commercial use in an applicant-owned new six-story mixed-use development located at 245 East 53rd Street, outlined in yellow, internal Bay Manhattan Community District Six. This was referred out on October 29th and is now back for a pre-hearing review. I'm going to take you through an abbreviated version of the presentation. The proposed project area in the black dotted line consists of 27 tax lots located on blocks 1326 and 1327 on East 53rd Street between Second and Third Avenues. The development site is outlined in red and has a new six-story mixed-use building. The project area is adjacent to the special Midtown District and is within the special transit land use district. These photos feature views of the new, as-of-right, six-story building that has been under construction during the application process, and these are views of East 53rd Street. You can see there are a significant number of ground-floor commercial establishments along the street. The development site is a 2,500-square-foot interior lot located on the south, on the north side of East 53rd Street. The site consists of a new 9,500-square-foot six-story mixed-use building with a proposed ground-floor commercial use and a total of five residential units located on floors two through six. The proposed action would allow the applicant to convert the site's ground-floor community facility space to commercial use, and it would not change the bulk or design of the The proposed zoning map amendment to add a C25 overlay to the existing R8B district would be mapped approximately 100 feet deep along the interior portion of the north and south frontages of East 53rd Street. Of the 27 properties that would be affected by the proposed action, 23 are fully located within the proposed overlay and R8B district. Of those 23, 19 already contain commercial uses, with the rest being community facility on the ground floor. Of the mixed-use commercial properties, the majority are legally non-conforming. The area is an active shopping and dining destination for Midtown, and the proposed C25 overlay would only affect the R8B portions of split lots. So the applicant seeks a zoning map amendment to add a C25 overlay to an existing R8B zoning district. And on December 12th, Community Board Six voted to approve the project with 37 in favor and one abstaining. And on January 2nd, the borough president issued a recommendation to approve the project. Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. So could you clarify, how many existing commercial uses would, as a result of this action, be brought into conformance?
Right. So it would actually be the 19 that already contain existing commercial uses.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Then we'll see this at a public hearing on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
The 11th item on the agenda, page 295, is a pre-hearing review of the special permits in Manhattan Community District Eight. Stephen Johnson is here to present.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application by Knickerbocker Plaza LLC and Yorkville Tower Associates LLC, which is seeking three parking special permits to increase the permitted number of parking spaces at three existing separate accessory parking facilities located in the Rupert Brewery LSRD on the Upper East Side of Manhattan between Second and Third Avenue and East 90th and 92nd Street. The application was certified on October 28th and is now back for pre-hearing review. I'll take you through an abbreviated version of the presentation. The proposed action would increase the total number of accessory parking spaces to 453. Those would be the new number of parking spaces. It would increase at Knickerbocker Garage by 98 spaces, Yorkville 205, and Rupert by 150, and make them all attended parking facilities. The garages were originally approved as self-parking garages but have functioned as attended parking for many years, and the increase in parking spaces would not require any new construction, just redesigning the interior space. The three towers were completed in 1975 with over 1,800 dwelling units and three accessory garages. Our area map shows the development site in red, in the Yorkville neighborhood on the Upper East Side. Now I'll walk you through each of the brief, briefly walk you through each of the garages. They have, each garage has multiple levels and ramps. These two photos here show the Knickerbocker Garage entrance, entrance at East 92nd Street, and a view of the residential tower from the pedestrian mall. This is our ground floor. The garage is located between East 91st and 92nd Street with an entrance on one-way eastbound 92nd Street. Upon entering through a 29-foot curb cut, cars proceed down a ramp to an attendant where there's 10 reservoir spaces. About 25% of the overnight parkers at Knickerbocker live at Knickerbocker Tower. These are just the lower levels. These two photos show the exterior of Yorkville and the garage entrance on East 92nd Street. The entrance for the garage is located about 100 feet west of Knickerbocker entrance. Drivers also enter through a 29-foot curb cut and head down, past a ramp, down to a lower level where there's an attendant waiting for them. There's 25 reservoir parking spaces, and these are lower levels of the garage. Like I said, there's many different levels. Okay, so these are the Rupert Garage entrance, exterior with the residential tower on the left-hand side. The entrance for Rupert is located on the north side of a one-way eastbound East 90th Street. The cars enter, go down the ramp, and they proceed to an attendant station at a lower level where they stop in one of the 19 reservoir spaces. The special permits for Yorkville and Rupert were required to do a residential growth parking study. The proposed project has a parking ratio, residential growth parking ratio of 26.5. In Community District Eight, the maximum permitted number of parking spaces to dwelling units is 35%. Section 13455 of the zoning resolution allows for increases in the number of spaces at existing accessory facilities to up to 35% of dwelling units. This is the case for Knickerbocker Garage. Since the totals for Yorkville and Rupert would be greater than 35%, Knickerbockers would be at 35%. So that's why they went through the different route for the special permit. So Community Board, Community Board Eight met on January 23rd and voted to approve the special permits, 32 in favor with four opposed. We received a letter from the borough president dated February 4th. This letter disapproves the application with modifications or conditions requesting lower parking rates for residents of the buildings and additional EV charging stations, as well as car-share services and bike parking, extra bike parking stations. And that wraps up the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
I'll just note that while reading the borough president's recommendation, I found myself nodding extensively, although I do have more sympathy for an existing facility that is there that can be operated more efficiently than I would were this a new permit. The department will, however, take a look at the particular recommendations for more bike parking and for more EV charging. bike parking and for more EV charging, and come back after we learn more at the public hearing and make a recommendation to the commission. Questions? Commissioner Levin.
Well, I certainly would support the department's taking a look at these recommendations. I would urge on the 50 bicycle spaces. I mean, honestly, the way the zoning resolution deals with bicycle spaces just is not practical. We can't regulate price. So we have this text that requires garages to make available bike parking spaces, but the reality is they're never used because the garage operators really don't want to have to deal with this, and they charge rates that are ridiculous and inappropriate. So I'm wondering if there's an opportunity here, inasmuch as this is a special permit, for there to be some arrangement between the building owner and the garage operator to provide these parking spaces for free or at a nominal price for building residents so that they, in fact, really do get used.
The buildings themselves have bike parking for the residents. I don't have the numbers in front of me. The applicant could speak to that on Wednesday, but there are bicycle parking spaces inside the existing towers for residents.
Okay. But maybe if they're oversubscribed, this is an opportunity? I just think it's unrealistic to think that we're ever going to get public people parking bikes in these garages. So let's figure out a way to maximize the possibility.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, I agree. And along those lines, I know a lot of buildings charge. I know my building recharge $15 a month for bike storage. And it is oversubscribed. And so it would be helpful to know what's the current ratio of bike parking if they are oversubscribed. And I think I like that idea along the lines of Commissioner Levin's suggestion. Is there a way that we can craft this to enable resident biking at the same price, perhaps, that they see in the housing? If there's a fee associated with that? But just exploring a solution that would make this meaningful bike parking.
As you know, the bike parking ratio for new developments is one bike parking space per two dwelling units. So that's kind of our standard. I don't know what it is for these buildings.
Yeah. And that's a much bigger issue also. If you look at any other city that has prioritized bicycle usage, their requirements are much higher. So in areas where we have really good infrastructure and access to biking, lanes, and certainly this area, I think, is one of them. One of the indicators that we look at is whether you have safe bike parking associated with your home. And so one for every two units is actually quite low in the big scheme of things. And so it would be great for us to think bigger picture about how we encourage bike parking.
I can tell you that when we did the bike parking text amendment, because I led that through the commission, our regulations were the most progressive out of anywhere by far in the United States. I'm not sure what it is now, but at the time, it was definitely...
Yeah. When you look at international examples, I think Portland has a higher requirement. But it's helpful, and I appreciate that we've been aggressive in the past, and I think we could continue to be aggressive. So thank you.
When was the bike parking amendment put through?
Oh, I don't know. I think I had brown hair when it did. Maybe six, seven years ago?
Thanks. Commissioner Ron Prashad.
Thank you for the presentation. Two questions or maybe a comment. Is it possible that they can show how the parking is being stacked since this is valley attendant on the plans?
I'm sorry.
The layout of the parking? Can they show that on the plan? And also the same thing with the bicycle storage? What kind of racks they're going to use, I guess?
Sure. So as part of this project, because it's not a new development or an enlargement or conversion, it doesn't meet the requirements in the zoning resolution to put in bike parking. It's not required by the special permit to put in bike parking. But typically, they have bike parking noted, I think, on the drawings. I don't know if they noted what type of park. There were racks, wall racks, vertical racks, or more like the French barriers that we see commonly. But we could talk about that with the applicant on Wednesday.
And also the stacking of the parking? I'm just curious how they lay it out? Because there's multiple levels and...
Yeah, because it's attended parking?
Yeah.
That there's nobody going, in the public or in the residents going there, so they can park the cars however they see fit. So we don't require them to put in a space, to show each space. If there were actual stackers, we would require them to put in, on the approved drawings or the drawings, where those stackers are located.
Again, I think those are questions to let the applicant know that they can expect on Wednesday. Commissioner Levin.
Stephen, I just wanted to apologize for calling the bike parking text amendment stupid or...
You meant ahead of its time.
I think ridiculous was the word I used. It is a frustration. It was the right thing to do at the time. I think we pushed as far as we could, but I've always been frustrated with the realities of the marketplace that have kind of thumbed their nose at what is really a good thing that we did.
No offense taken.
You're not ridiculous or stupid.
I've been to many community board meetings, and I'm pardoned from any comments.
But you don't expect it from the commission.
And the fact that we, as a land use matter, don't regulate price.
Well, that's our conundrum in trying to deal with this.
Commissioner Deloos.
So how much parking has actually been going on in these three garages? Are we just mostly legalizing what has been going on?
I think that's pretty much the case.
Okay. Because then, I'm just looking at the special permit findings about creating or contributing to serious traffic congestion or will not unduly inhibit surface traffic. So we don't anticipate, if this were to be approved, that it would change that dramatically.
That's correct. So during the environmental review, they looked at congestion at intersections, and because the towers are located on different streets, all the cars are not coming in onto one intersection, so it was separated out. So it didn't have any impacts, according to the environmental review.
Other questions? Then we'll have a lively public hearing on Wednesday.
Okay. The 12th item on the agenda, page 414, is a non-ULEP post-referral for renewal of the previously approved special permits in Manhattan Community District 4. Annie White is here to present. Ron, hope you're not...
Oh, sorry.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is an application for a second renewal for two previously granted special permits and one authorization for the renovation and development at Piers 9294 in Manhattan Community District 4. The applicant for this project is a subsidiary of Vornado Realty Trust. The piers are located west of Route 9A between West 52nd and West 55th Street in the Clinton neighborhood. The applicant is seeking renewal for a three-year term of the following three actions: a special permit to allow a trade exposition facility with a capacity of over 2,500 people; a special permit pursuant to modify the maximum length and maximum height of buildings or other structures; and authorization for the modification of waterfront public access requirements. So these three actions were a result of a 2008 RFP issued by EDC to facilitate the improvements of Piers 9294 as a venue for trade shows, exhibitions, and related events, as well as the development of a new public open space and public amenities space on the site. The two special permits and authorization were previously approved by the City Planning Commission on June 17, 2009. And I'm giving you some background of the timeline, just to give an understanding of the dates and why they're coming back for the second renewal now. Pursuant to Section 1142B, the approvals lapse unless substantial construction has been completed within four years of the effective date or the applicant's possession of the site. The applicant took possession of the site on November 16, 2011, with a ground lease of the City of New York through the Department of Small Building Services. Therefore, the approvals lapsed on November 16, 2015. The original application for renewals was filed on November 10, 2015, and approved by the City Planning Commission on June 1, 2017. This extended the approvals for one three-year term, which lapsed last year on November 16, 2018. So the application for the second renewal, which is in front of the commission today, was filed on November 8, which was prior to the lapse of the first renewal. So for some context of the piers, this area map shows the piers outlined here in the black dotted line and the surrounding land use. East of Route 9A is the Special Clinton District. Directly east of the project site is the DeWitt Clinton Park. Immediately north of the project site is the Clinton Cove Park, operated by the Hudson River Park Trust. And to the south of the project site are Piers 88 and 90, which operate as a passenger ship terminal. The site is an M23 manufacturing zoning district in a waterfront area along the Hudson River. The maximum FAR on the site is 2. Piers 9294 are owned by the City of New York and are under the jurisdiction of the Department of Small Business Services. Pier 94, which is the one to the north, and the headhouse are currently utilized as exhibition space, while Pier 92 is used as exhibition space but also loading, servicing, and a cruise ship terminal use. The Pier 92 rooftop is currently used as around 300-space parking lot for cruise ship passengers. Here are some images of the piers as they are today. The landward portion of the project site is developed with the headhouse building running approximately 600 feet along the length of the bulkhead line. You can see that headhouse in both the top right and the bottom left images. A service drive is located to the east of the headhouse, allowing for passenger drop-off and truck unloading and loading in front of the facility. Piers 92 and 94 are each developed with a pier shed, building that connects to the headhouse, and there's currently no public access to the seaward side of the headhouse on either of the piers. Here are some additional photos looking south from the Clinton Cove Park and where there will eventually be greater public access to the piers connecting that to the park. The three actions are to facilitate the redevelopment of the piers as defined in the EDC RFP, so a special permit to allow a trade exposition facility with a capacity over 2,500 people; special permit to modify the maximum length and maximum height of buildings or other structures; and authorization for the modification of public waterfront access area requirements. So the goals of this redevelopment program were to create an improved trade show space and an expanded second level of the headhouse for around 80,000 square feet of trade show, exhibition, and related event space. Additionally, adding public access areas to Pier 94 will benefit both the trade show visitors and the public, including a new pedestrian walkway with a canopy, a new public seating area on Pier 94. A new pavilion space at the northern end of the headhouse will be available for periodic use by the public, with restrooms and a multipurpose room open year-round for public use. There will also be a walkway and public amenities area between the project site and Clinton Cove Park to the north. Pursuant to Section 1142B, any authorization or special permit that would automatically lapse may be renewed without a public hearing for two additional three-year terms, provided that the commission finds that the facts upon which the authorization or special permit was granted have not substantially changed. The applicant has responded to the obvious delay in construction, explaining that the improvements of the facility suffered significant setback in 2012, when the facility experienced substantial flooding during Hurricane Sandy, causing damage to electrical and mechanical systems. The applicant has spent a large amount of time and capital to repair these systems and make the facility operable since this time. Additionally, the applicant has completed improvements to bathrooms, escalators, roofing, and other aspects of the facility to recover from Hurricane Sandy. Given the work that has been required to maintain and repair the facility, the applicant states it is unable to compete the substantial construction of the approved redevelopment prior to the first renewal lapse in November of 2018. Despite the setbacks, the findings upon which the City Planning Commission granted the 2009 approvals have not substantially changed, including the design enmassings of the building and structures, along with the proposed public open space and public amenities. In its referral at the Community Board meeting on January 2, 2019, Manhattan Community Board 4 adopted a resolution recommending denial of the application unless conditions from the 2009 approval and 2017 renewal are met. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Levin.
So Annie, the piers are currently operating. In fact, the Westminster Dog Show is going on there as we speak. So have they sort of done partial work under these special permits?
They have.
And they're not complete, so they have to keep the permits alive?
That's correct. So they've done mostly recovery work to restore the facility after the hurricane so that it remains in its operable use. But the proposed plans, which include an expanded public facility, the public pavilion, and a greater exhibition space, and the public access, what was planned under these special permits and authorizations have not yet been done because of the restraints.
I almost got wiped out this morning, riding down the bike path to come here by a flood of SUVs trying to get into the dog show. I mean, I guess dogs draw a whole lot more people than some of the other things that go on there. But it strikes me, reading Community Board 4's application, that there are some traffic safety improvements that we really ought to be insisting on. The city is the landlord here. If you ride down that bike path, Chelsea Piers has a traffic safety person out there, I think, virtually all the time. And it's because the bike path crosses the entry points to both of those facilities at an oblique angle that it's really an unsafe situation. So I really think that, particularly when they're having big, active shows at these piers, it ought to be, we ought to have the leverage under the city's lease to look at some of the traffic improvement commitments that were made as part of these ULEPs and insist that they be implemented now.
Having had the same circumstance multiple times, because I'm a frequent user of that bike path, I'll very gladly raise this with EDC, because to look at the lease and see what they can do about that.
Yeah. It seems that they ought to have someone out there flagging traffic when there's a big show. I realize it's not all the time, but when there's a big show, it's a mess.
No, thank you for that. And so what, other comments? Then I'll ask, I'll ask a question. This is the final renewal, right?
Yes.
That's possible. I'll ask for an asemby show of hands to send a letter to the Department of Buildings noting that the special permit is renewed. Thank you.
Just want to note that Commissioner Cirillov is recused on that item for the record. Okay. The 13th item on the agenda, page 455, is a non-ULEP post-referral of a previously approved authorization. In his first presentation to the Commissioner, Ron Reinerston of the Staten Island office is here to present.
I might name call before I get up.
Yeah, there we go.
Good afternoon. I'm here to discuss with you today an application submitted by Asai Plaza 1285 LLC, seeking a second and final renewal of an authorization to facilitate a proposed development of a 100,000-square-foot retail store and accessory parking for 370 cars at 470 New Dorp Lane. The prior authorization approved by the commission on November 2, 2011, was for a group parking facility, which is accessory to commercial development on a zoning lot in excess of four acres in a C-41 district, and a reduction of parking for up to 50%. The applicant previously received a renewal for this original application in April 2016. The proposed development, subject to the original approvals, remains as originally designed, and a proposed site plan has not been modified from the original application. The project site previously contained buildings that were utilized as a supermarket and garden supply store. The outline of these demolished structures and accessory parking lot can be clearly seen in this aerial. The project site is located in the New Dorp section of Staten Island's Community District 2 and remains vacant. We have views of the site facing southwest from New Dorp Lane and facing southwest from the intersection of New Dorp Lane and Mill Road. The site is at the southwest corner of New Dorp Lane and Mill Road, which is one block east of Highland Boulevard, one of the most busiest-traveled arterials in Staten Island. The surrounding neighborhood context consists of big-box retail developments along Highland Boulevard, smaller neighborhood retail uses along New Dorp Lane, two public high schools, New Dorp to New Northeast, and Staten Island Tech to the West, and residential buildings, which include a 72-unit residential townhouse development contiguous to the southwest, and one and two-family detached houses to the southeast. The site is located in the C-41 district with R-31 and R-32 and C-21 overlay districts within 400 feet to the southwest, northeast, and northwest, respectively. The C-41 is bounded by Highland Boulevard, New Dorp Lane, Mill Road, and Tyson's Lane. C-41 districts are mapped in regional commercial centers located in areas of the city, such as this section of Staten Island, whose regional commercial uses require large amounts of parking. parking. The zoning district and character in the surrounding area remain unchanged since 2011. In 2011, the commission granted approval, which included a 44% reduction of parking in order to facilitate the construction of a new 100,000-square-foot retail store and accessory parking for 375 cars accessed by four curb cuts. The commission granted a first renewal for the original application in April 2016. The proposed development has not been constructed, and accordingly, the authorization would have lapsed last November upon expiration of the first renewal had the applicant not file the second and final renewal application, which they did. The proposed development, subject to the original approvals, remains as originally designed, and a proposed site plan has not been modified from the original application. Site plan is here on this slide. The applicant seeks the renewal of the original authorization order to facilitate the development of the project as originally proposed. The commission may renew the application provided that the facts upon which the authorization was granted have not substantially changed. The application was referred to Community Board Two for a recommendation they opted not to hold a hearing or vote and issued a letter of no objections. To summarize, the applicant is seeking a second and final renewal of the original authorizations to facilitate this project as originally proposed. A two-story, 100,000-square-foot retail store and accessory parking for 370 cars, the proposed site plan, has not been modified from the original application.
Questions from the commission? Then what I'll do is ask for an assent by show of hands to send a letter to the Department of Buildings that the authorization is renewed. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to future votes. Staff have prepared reports for consideration on February 13 for the Bushwick Alliance 63 Stockholm Street, the Joseph Daniel Wilson Memorial Garden expansion, Park Terrace West Historic District. Also scheduled for decision on February 13 are 35 Rate Avenue. Rate Avenue, is pronounced correctly? Ret Avenue, 19 Vale Avenue, 135 Cromwell Circle, 45 Coverley Avenue, 35 Coverley Avenue, and 695 West 446th Street. Staff have also prepared a report for consideration on a special meeting of February 25 for 809 Atlantic Avenue. Yes, and we believe we have the Brooklyn office here to discuss.
We have a, oh, there it is. We just had a quick update regarding 809 Atlantic Avenue, specifically in relation to the special permit to waive the residential parking. In response to questions about exceeding the bicycle parking minimum, which is, as described earlier, a one-to-two ratio for the number of dwelling units, the applicants are voluntarily exceeding that requirement by doubling the amount of parking to be one-to-one. Correct. And so we just had, for reference, seller plans for both of the buildings. As you may recall, because the development is split into two tax lots, there are two separate buildings as part of one mixed-use development. And I'm happy to take any questions or elaborate on that further if necessary.
Comments? Commissioner Ortiz.
I'm thrilled.
Let the record reflect smiles all around. Thank you.
Okay. For post-hearing follow-up, we have, I believe, a short presentation on 41 Summit Street
Let the record show that Commissioner Deloos is recused.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioner. This is a post-hearing update on the private application for the 41 Summit Street rezoning, which had a CPC public hearing on January 9, 2019. You'll recall that the proposed rezoning area is comprised of three lots with a total of 10,500 square feet. It's currently in an M-11 district in the Columbia Street waterfront neighborhood of Brooklyn, and the applicant's proposal is to rezone the lots to R-7A with the C-24 overlay and to map MIH options 1 and 2. Here are some photos of the proposed rezoning area. The applicant controls the lot that has the garage door building, about two-story brick building with the garage door there on Summit Street. And the other two lots are represented by the Chase Bank on the corner condition there and the three-story building that's currently vacant. The three-story building is adjacent to a community garden, so to the left of that is the community garden. And lastly, a view from Summit Street with the site sort of at the end there. So two primary concerns were brought to light through the public hearing and also the Brooklyn Borough President's recommendations. Those were the difference in the building scale and character under the proposed R-7A district versus the adjacent R-6B, and also the potential extent of shadow coverage affecting the adjacent community garden. So as follow-up, the department reviewed alternative zoning options, looking into the applicant-proposed R-7A, a reduced residential envelope, R-6A, and the borough president recommended R-6B. R-6B, however, is not within scope of this application because it would reduce the available community facility FAR below what is currently available under M-11. So part of the analysis was to get a better idea then of the realistic built form we would see on these lots under R-7A versus R-6A. The analysis assumed a C-24 overlay as proposed and also assumed that lots 1 and 3, the non-applicant lots, would be assembled and developed with one building. And the reason for that is the fact that Lot 3 is quite narrow and has been vacant for some time. So under R-7A, what we'd see, we'd expect to see, is a maximization of the floor plate coverage and the floor area ratio, but in that case, not a building that is, a building, pardon me, that is unable to maximize the allowed height. And that's fairly typical for lots with this kind of dimension located on corners that are under contextual district designation, not reaching the potential height in the envelope. The height at the applicant's lot, that's on the side there, the 64 feet 9 inches, that would be, that's as proposed, or yes, that's as proposed by the applicant, but it would be capped at 65 feet under the transition rule requirements in zoning in this case. Under the R-6A scenario, again, the residential built form, the cap in floor area ratio and the lot shape, we would not expect it to facilitate getting to a maximum height available on the non-applicant lot. And the applicant lot would again be capped by the transition rule, this time at 55 feet. So essentially, you're seeing a maximization of floor area at 55 feet across. There were some questions also about the potential housing to be developed under each scenario, that could be developed under each scenario. The applicant provided programming for their lot under R-7A or R-6A, so that they're expecting seven units or less not triggering MIH. And the department projected the numbers under the Lot 1 and 3 assemblage scenarios. In each of those cases on the larger lot, it's possible that an owner would not develop a residential amount greater than 25,000 square feet. So in that case, developing under 25,000 square feet, they have the option of paying an in-lug fee rather than actually putting affordable units on the site. I'll note that we had hoped to receive shadow studies in time to share them from the applicant today for R-7A. Our 7A shadow studies were provided in the seeker of the application. We'd hoped to receive them for the R-6A envelope as well, but didn't receive them in time to share them in this presentation, and we will follow up with the commission as soon as we have them. However, it's just to note that due to the envelope reduction and the height reduction under the R-6A scenario, we could be expected to reduce the potential reach, the extent of the shadows in the R-6A scenario. And at this time, the department is recommending that the commission vote to modify the proposed rezoning to an R-6A with a C-24 overlay and MIH mapping. I'd be happy to take questions.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Dweck.
Can you just clarify for the record why an R-6B is not within context and not feasible?
Right. So currently, the community facility that is allowed under M-11 is 2.4, and in the case of a reduction to R-6, or in the case of a modification or rezoning to R-6B, that community facility on those lots would only be allowed to build up to 2.0, and that reduction did not go through public review.
Commissioner Levin.
So in the same vein, though, I mean, understanding that it's out of scope, what would the building envelope for an R-6B look like? What's, can you remind us what the FAR is? Yeah, go back to the R-6A image perhaps and then tell us what would change if it were R-6B, if you know.
So the--
Mostly, you know, for height and density, that's a real concern here.
Right. The FAR available, does somebody have that on hand? I don't want to misquote it. 2.0 FAR. 2, pardon me. Oops, pardon me.
So the FAR would be 2.2 with MIH, 2 without MIH. We modeled it out. I mean, the maximum height in R-6B is 55 feet, 45 going up to 55. However, because of the corner lot condition, because of the lot coverage, an R-6B would actually be at around three stories, so it'd actually be lower than some of the existing buildings that are nearby.
So the R-6B may have an, or the R-6A may have an unappealing label for the community, but perhaps the reality of what would get built is quite consistent, certainly much more consistent with what the community was urging than what the applicant wants.
That's actually why we made the assumptions, because unlike in Manhattan where you seek to optimize the height, here, the economics would dictate building the fewest number of floors that allow you to use your floor area. And so we showed the theoretical building envelope, but don't believe that would be built, that rather a shorter, squatter building is what would make sense from a floor plate and economics point of view. It was because of this modeling, which I'll note was done by the department, not by the applicant, we wanted to dig into getting a sense of what it would look like. We were quite struck by the very effective testimony from the community, and so we got ourselves comfortable that the R-6A on other lots might have resulted in taller buildings, but on these particular three lots, we're quite comfortable with what results under the R-6A.
Yeah, this is certainly a step in the right direction.
Other comments? Commissioner Ortiz.
I will note, since we're on a roll, I guess, that for these lots, because there's, you know, they were able to waive both parking and bike requirements because of the size of the lot, and I presume there's going to be available storage space and that the owner might have an interest in providing bike storage for these residents, and if that is the case, it would be helpful to know.
We can follow up with the applicant and share with the commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to 103 North 13th Street, I believe we also, no presentation, but I think we're here to take any questions, any further questions on that? No? Okay. The McDonald Avenue catering. And last, but, oh, we do have some questions.
No, I was just going to say, I thought the applicant's letter to us explaining the circumstances of how this thing came about and how they came to realize they had a problem and how they're actually providing a strong community, or activities that are consistent with, that are, in fact, building community. Anyway, I bought the letter.
Okay, moving on to certainly last but not least, Blondell Commons. I believe the Bronx office has some slides to discuss.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So just wanted to follow up with some additional context following the public hearing two weeks ago. The slide here shows the context of the rezoning area. You'll see highlighted in a dash line here. Blondell Avenue is characterized by a mix of uses, including commercial, some residential, light manufacturing, some auto-related uses. But we wanted to point out that the area to the north of the rezoning area really contains a lot of the light manufacturing uses that are typical of an M-zone and are categorized here on Blondell Avenue, while the rezoning area in the more southern portion of Blondell Avenue still contains that mix but has more commercial and similar uses to the bid area to the west here. Also wanted to point out that the development site today is vacant and that the only active lot within the rezoning area that would become non-conforming by the rezoning is Lot 63, which is shown in purple here, which contains a warehouse today. We also wanted to follow up because, you know, there's a lot of discussion about ambulances at the public hearing, and so this slide shows the major hospitals in the area, Jacoby and Montefiore, which can be accessed from various routes, including East Chester Road and Williams Bridge Avenue; from the south, Waters Place from the east, and Pallan Parkway from the north. And you can see the rezoning area down here. And so while Blondell Commons may be a route that ambulances could use to access these hospitals, it would not be the most direct route or certainly not the only and always preferred route for ambulances. And in addition to that, a traffic analysis was completed as part of the EAS, and it did not show that a proposed rezoning would cause significant delays with action condition. So just wanted to follow up about those things, but happy to answer more questions as well.
I'll just note two additional things. Having had the benefit of driving up and down Blondell, that there is quite a big change from the area adjacent to West Chester where it's vacant at this point and some very active automotive uses on the balance of the avenue, which is not being proposed for rezoning. Those automotive uses, as frequently occurs, we've been told spill out into the street, and it's a quite unimproved street. So again, it would seem unlikely to be the route for the ambulances. We had an interesting bit of informal testimony. It ends up that the borough offices for the city's Department of Transportation actually back up onto Blondell, and they volunteered they've never once heard an ambulance along the street, hardly scientific, but again, corroborating. Commissioner Deloos.
Obviously, the issues of traffic came up a lot during the hearing. I'm just wondering, as did the concern potentially about queuing related to the garage entrance and/or retail deliveries. So I'm just wondering, did the applicant indicate that they were going to do any additional studies to try to address any of those questions? I'm trying to remember if they specifically indicated that during the hearing. They did not.
I don't remember that. I know that they, you know, have talked with the Borough President's Office about the secondary access, but a lot of concerns about the unimproved street of Cooper Avenue have come up.
And other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I believe this, that's the last item on the agenda and would conclude the review session of February 11, 2019. The time is 3:11.